Okay. Back in October, when we approved the matrix, I didn't anticipate that we would continue as the city of Dearborn to remain the highest outside of Detroit with our positivity numbers. And we are probably skewing the average for Wayne County because of it. And we currently have over 8,000 cases. The next largest city with a similar population has 4,000 something in Livonia. So we have double what any of our other Wayne County cities have in positivity rates as of January. So that has always been my primary focus as opposed to the county's positivity rate. They might be 8.6%, but ours is significantly higher. I would suspect we've been in double digits from October on. As sometimes we can drop down to a low number, but the majority of a week shows 30, 40, sometimes as high as 60 of late. So that being said, I want to continue to keep my eye on Dearborn's numbers as opposed to Wayne County's average. Because that is what we are going to be exposing our students and staff to when they go back into the buildings. Allen Park's numbers don't matter to our Dearborn staff and students. What we have going on in our city is what's going to affect the spread of any virus. So that's, I just wanted to make that comment. Number.
Oh, sorry, were you done?
What, I have one more question. When it comes to the vaccinations, I'm a Henry Ford MyChart member. I just went on just to see, I'm, I'm in, I would be in the 1C group. So I've received no notification, but I wanted I, because I could click on the link, being a member of MyChart for Henry Ford, what would get you a vaccination appointment? So I did click on it. And I'm not sure how well their screening, I mean, could you go in and lie and say, yeah, I, I'm an educator or I have contact with children and just get an appointment? And are there people who are jumping the line when we could really? I would love to have clicked on that and say, hey, yeah, I, I, I'm working with kids. I want my vaccination. I, I didn't do that, of course. I want to save those spots. I'd like to see my 92-year-old mother-in-law who's in a nursing home, get her vaccine. She hasn't gotten it yet. My 71-year-old husband hasn't gotten it yet. I want to make sure that people who can really benefit from this at this moment in time, who are actually going to be face-to-face with students and, and really need it are going to get in the front of the line. And not somebody working in a back room somewhere on a computer is going to say, hey, I got my staff ID, let me get, let me get a vaccine. But they have no contact with children and we've got teachers waiting. Do you have any idea how much of the vaccination appointments are actually being utilized for the best intended purposes?
Honestly, I have no way to know that, unfortunately, trustee Petlicov. I would just be making an assumption. I, I do know that our, a lot of our educators have had appointments. And according to the governor's order, P to 12 staff are all eligible under the 1B category, as far as that category goes.
Right, so if you're not even going to be in the classroom, which is where it would give the most benefit to having face-to-face, you could, I mean, I, I can, I absolutely want to see our teachers and custodial staff and engineers, people in the buildings with the kids. But the person sitting in a, in a, you know, IT room, who's not, not going to be in front of students, maybe could wait a little bit.
Yeah, we don't have, oh, sorry, go ahead.
Oh, that's okay. I mean, you know, it, it, Mary, I'm not sure how, you know, how, I, I know how it worked for me. When I got mine, I've, I work a second job at Henry Ford in the ICU. So I was one of the first staff to get it. I did wear my badge in there and originally it was ICU staff. But I imagine that there's some people that can kind of jump the line and get in there if they're, if they don't have to provide their credentials. You know, it's one of those things, like as a public, like you're saying, that you would, you wouldn't want to jump in front of somebody that, you know, isn't a different level.
Circumstance, yeah.
That's ready, there, you know, this is, this is how it needs to roll out. We're, we're trying to get the people or the, you know, the county, the state is trying to get it, that people vaccinated based on their, you know, how, how, oh my goodness, I'm messing my words up. But you know, how their jobs can, and performing their jobs and how frequently they come in contact with people and that sort of thing. So, you know, when you're, you can get appointments at Henry Ford, but you are answering questions and, you know, for me, honesty, I mean, I'm going to answer honestly. If I'm not in the group, I need to wait my turn because somebody else is going to need that shot. I think it would be prudent, and I do believe this has been discussed as, you know, as a school district, you would want to look at, you know, who in the district, if we have to make a decision and we can't get 2,000 vaccines all at once, who do you choose to go first in your district? And so that needs to be looked at and discussed. And you would want to put those that are most at risk, let's say, you know, special education. Obviously, they, they're with a population of kids that are a little bit harder to mask. Maybe these kids have trakes, they have other medical issues that may preclude them from, you know, being tested and, and they require close contact by their nurses and teachers and that sort of thing. So that would be a, you know, like that sort of thing is you need to look at that. And as a district, make a decision on if we have a limited number of shots that are available to us, how do we roll that out in our district to make sure that, you know, those that are higher risk are first? So, and that, that's, I think, one of the things that needs to be looked at as a group.
And, and those conversations have already started and we have a kind of a dialogue going because we have to make that decision quickly. So just to add that, you know, that is where, Mary, we would have control over it with the Wayne County Health Department, whereas individuals going to the hospital, that again would be on their own honesty. But they, if they're K-12, technically under the governor's order, if they're K-12, they are, or a P-12. Any staff members in the school district are technically eligible. And then we would be prioritizing with the Wayne County. So they are actually allowed under the rules of 1B. But obviously, and we've, and on the Wayne County Health Department, or excuse me, the Wayne County Superintendent Association, we had talked about that, but they have not yet prioritized. Now, I am hearing, I mentioned about special ed. I am hearing that they may open up special ed the entire week for special ed staff. So the special ed may be taken care of this week right away. And we're getting word out, we're trying to get word right now on Saturday. I'm communicating with Mike Assaly, who's communicating with the county.
Oh, I'm sorry. That's, you know, one of the other concerns is that, like, like it's been mentioned, even in, in my, my personal issue, when I got my vaccine, you know, Henry Ford got the delivery of vaccines on Tuesday. And I had a phone call like two hours after they had. It was my unit manager that called me and said, hey, we're up, you know, get your shot. So when the health department is going to let us know that it's our turn, we need to be ready to move. And, and it could be that you have, you know, a day's notice. It may be that they call you up and say, you know what? We've got extra shots today. How about you guys bring in 150? You know, it, it really is that quick. So people need to be ready to go. And it's, if at all possible, I wouldn't push our turn off. So, you know, if, if we're notified that it's our turn, we need to get our people over there to get them vaccinated. Because if we don't, you know, we may end up losing our spot. So it's, you know, people need to be ready to go on it and to make arrangements to, you know, they may say, a lot of time, what's been happening at the health department is they may give, let's, let's say, for example, you know, they say Dearborn's schools are ready to go. They may tell us to show up on Wednesday between the hours of one and three. So they're not doing, like, Henry Ford is giving you an actual appointment time, but the health department is doing more of a mass vaccination. So they'll give you several hours that, that your group should show up and get vaccinated. So, you know, people just need to be ready to go. And if they, you know, if they want to go get the vaccine, then they, they need to be able to make the arrangements to get over and get that at that time. Hopefully, we'll have, you know, a day or two notice. But in some, some issue or some situations, I've seen it, it's pretty much, hey, we've got some extra, let's get some people over here, you know? So it could be that quick.
Amy, I think that gets back to what Dr. Maliko was saying, that if we send out a quick survey to all staff to find out, have you already been vaccinated?
Yep.
Are you open to vaccination or are you not willing to get vaccinated? We need to know that information right away. So as soon as we hear that there's openings, we can send something out to people so we can take advantage of it better.
If they give us, you know, if they give our district, say they give us 1,000, you know, we want to, we want to make sure we have 1,000 people to go over there. So that information's important to have so that they can be notified, you know, within, with a quick email, a phone call from their admin. We want to make sure that people know it's our turn and that they can get over there to get it. So, you know, and it may roll, I don't know how, I don't know how many we're going to get, you know, but it could be, we get 500 this day, we get 500 the next day, you know, maybe over a couple of days they do that, or we have 1,000. If we have 1,000, we want to have 1,000 people over there. You know, we don't want to show up with 800 and lose our 200 doses. So it's important that they fill out that information so that they can be notified once we receive it because it really is going to go that fast.
Any other trustees with a question at this time? Trustee Moses.
Yes, the thing is, speaking of priority and hopefully Dr. Maliko will communicate with Wayne County or we as a board send a letter. Dearborn was one of the most hit cities in Michigan and Southeast Michigan, or in Wayne County in particular. So we should be given priority as far as the vaccination. The fact that they had today a surprise setting at Schoolcraft College to get vaccinated and left out Dearborn is, is really questionable. So I, I would like also to note that we want to open our schools for vaccination centers if they would like to, if that will make their job easier. So our staff can be in and out quickly and get them possibly vaccinated in one dose for, for one day and make that as easy as possible. The second thing that I wanted to mention and be clear about that when we agreed back in October was based on those metrics. And I, I just went back to review the motion and how we agreed upon this. It was an or statement. So it was saying, we either meet the positivity rate under 5% or we are being designated in, in Level D or better. So it was not both and. I think that, that, that should be cleared or the public need to know that this was an or situation. So currently we're in metric D, which is where we want to be. Actually, we want to be in the better metrics. But having the positivity rate is also a number, is not a requirement with the metric D as, as I see it right now. Correct me if I'm wrong.
All right, next question, or yeah, next handoff I see is for trustee Barry.
Trustee Moses, where are you seeing that? This or this?
Minutes of October 26th. I can read that if you'd like.
The minutes of October, yeah, please, if you haven't read.
Yeah, it says, President Barry made a motion moved by trustee Moses, supported by trustee Petlicov to accept their recommendation from the administration, Phase 1 November, we had those dates, November 16th. And then the grades, third through fifth, Phase 3, preschool and fourth, second semesters or later. And then it says, when the Wayne County Health metric grade is D or better, and then I am, and two weeks positive trends are below 5%. So I'm sorry, I'll, I'll correct myself.
Okay.
It's, it's having those two metrics together to, to open up the schools, not one way or another.
Okay, I just want to make sure we're clear because I remember we said D or better. It took us a long time to get to D. Then that was the trigger, then it would be 5% or lower trending for 14 days or two weeks. Okay, it wasn't this or that, just want to make sure.
Correct.
Okay, thank you very much.
Any other comments before we continue the presentation? All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Amy. So I'm going to call in Mark Andrews right now, who's going to talk about the, and this is going to be a review really of some of the safety and cleaning. But we continue, just so you know, to stockpile our PPE and, and you can expect another order coming soon as well. Mark?
Yeah, good afternoon, thank you, Dr. Maliko. It's a pleasure to be here and trustees. As Dr. Maliko mentioned, a lot of this is going to be a repeat from what we discussed back in October with a little bit of tweaks from the new direction that we received from the state. So what I'm, everything that I'm, just a friendly reminder, as I stated back in October, everything that I'm going to go over right now is what we're doing extra from what a normal school year would be due to the, due to the pandemic. So one of the new directions that we received from the state is they relaxed the disinfecting. So now, it used to be much more detailed, now they just, it needs to be done twice a day. So we went into our plans and Mr. Shelby, our supervisor of our facilities, we've been working together with Mr. Leacher, our safety expert, and, and adjusting our plans accordingly. So, but before I move on with all the discussions that are, that have been taking place, there's a lot of terms and terminology thrown around. I just want to take a moment here to just, just explain the difference when, with the words that I use when I say disinfectant and sanitize. So sanitize, the definition refers to reducing the bacteria growth. Where disinfectant, it, it kills the virus. So and disinfecting doesn't always require wiping the surface. Some products will kill on contact. However, at some point, you do have to wipe the surfaces down because you need to get the dirt and grime off, off the surfaces because that's where viruses and bacteria can hide in. So just to give you a little brief description of there. So looking at what, what we're doing as far as extra, we've, and we've already done a lot of these with the learning labs before we went on pause. So we've adjusted the custodial schedules, similar to what we did with the learning labs. We're going to continue to do that. And with efforts to bring in instruction, custodians in during the instruction portion of the day without sacrificing the duties that will be needed after the end of the constru-, our instructional day, even though the state's new recommendation is for disinfecting, they complete it only twice a day. With the staff being in during the day and going around the building to do it during instruction day, and then we're going to do it again at the end of the day. And in many cases, we're going to be disinfecting the buildings more than twice a day. So as Dr. Maliko mentioned, our plans are to go above and beyond. In conjunction with this, and this is, this is really important. This is a difference that I want to point out, that we're in a much better situation right now. We've, we've had great assistance from our HR department. Now, we've been really focusing on recruiting because as a lot of the board members know, we had a lot of vacancies in our custodial C eight-hour positions. But I'm happy to pass along today that at our next board meeting in February, we will be bringing a request to fill the last few vacancies in our custodial C positions. So that's really, you know, I can sit here and be much more comfortable moving forward with knowing that we have all of our custodial positions at the full-time eight-hour positions filled at, if, if you honor our request in the February board meeting. Another thing that we, we're going to be doing is coordinating with our administrators to be able to get into the classrooms when they're available. This will be during the lunchtime, elementary recess, prep time, et cetera. Again, at the end of the day, as a friendly reminder, we're going to be thoroughly cleaning and disinfecting the entire building, which will include wiping down all the surfaces. Now, on the proposed Wednesdays, this is where we're going to do what's a lot of you have heard, a deeper clean. We'll take advantage of this extra time to thoroughly go through the entire building, disinfect again with emphasis on really wiping down every surface that really, anything that could, the, the virus could come in contact with. And this will also allow us time to take an inventory, restock our supplies, make sure that every room is filled with PPE and sanitizer that, that they need during instructional time. We also, at, at the beginning of a school year, we purchase some electrostatic disinfecting backpack sprayers. These are much more efficient, they save a lot of time and the disinfecting labor that's needed to do the disinfecting. And we've also incorporated checklists. These checklists will be able to help us keep track of where and when the areas of the building have been disinfected. We've also are going to be limiting the classroom materials and personal belongings. This will help us be much more efficient with clear tabletops and clear desks and be able to get that disinfecting done. And then to look at some of the products, everything that we've purchased so far has been approved by the EPA. And it's either, you know, an approved product or a diluted chlorine, which both is approved by the EPA and our Wayne County Health Department. But I do want to note that with the high demand on these products right now, what we have on hand, it may change as products become available or unavailable. But I'm going to go over a little bit of what we have on hand right now. The first product is called a Clean On The Go, it's an, it's HDQC2. This is used in a spray bottle in conjunction with the rag. Another product that we have on hand is GS103. Again, that's using the same matter with, in a bottle, spray bottle with the rag. Both of these products, when diluted and used properly, are not classified as hazardous and contain no hazard to the environment according to GHS, which is Globally Harmonized System for Classifying and Labeling Chemicals. But note that we do have mixing stations in our buildings, which will eliminate air for, air for the proper dilution ratios. We also have a product called Cleese. This is a alcohol-based, it's 75%. And we also have several, because they were so hard to get a hold of, we kind of purchased whatever we could get our hands on. We have several brands of disinfectant wipes that are all 75% alcohol or higher. Now, getting back to the electronic sprayer, and, and these sprayer units we use, it's a chlorine-based product. It, this doesn't require any back wiping. This product, this, this disinfectant will kill on contact without any wiping. These sprayers have been used in the hospital entry for some time. So they've been tried and tested to work well. The way these work is they put a positive electronic charge in a disinfectant. And this allows the disinfectant to clean any product that it comes into contact, any surface that it comes into contact with. And that may be vertical, under desk, above desk. So that's what's, that's what's neat about these. The great thing about this disinfectant that we're using these is it doesn't require any PPE to be used for, for the, the person using them. And further, it's also safe to the touch for anyone who comes into contact with. And it, some of, some of you have already seen this video, but for those of you have not, our communications department, everything that I just talked about, they put together some great videos that are on our website. So that's kind of it real briefly of what we're doing. I'll ask if there's any questions before I hand it over to Mr. Leacher, our, our security expert, to go over what we're doing as far as social distancing and the measures in our hallways.
Trustee Watts, I saw your hand up.
So I have a couple of questions. So on Wednesday, you said you're going to take advantage of an empty school building and do a deep clean. During that time period, are we anticipating teachers being in their classrooms, teaching? And if so, then how are you going to schedule around them?
So in my answer to that is the teachers being there wouldn't, if they needed to be in their room, it wouldn't stop us from being able to clean that room. I'm sure that we could coordinate around them taking a break or lunch, that we could get in there and do the, the proper cleaning of the room. Again, I, I would just say that we'll work with the administrators on that schedule and we'll go from there on that.
Okay. And the other thing, you had mentioned a checklist, perhaps like a daily cleaning checklist. Is that something that is going to be visible, like outside of the cleaning door? Just so that everyone is on the same page to know, like, oh, so-and-so wasn't, this wasn't clean yet? Or where's that checklist going to be available?
The checklist will be in our engineer's office. We want to make them to be the, the, the main responsible to manage that and supervise that to make sure they're done. But it could be available upon request.
Okay. And then the last thing is this past week, I was able to kind of tour some of the buildings throughout our district, just to kind of see the variations in the classroom sizes and whatnot. And the one thing I had noticed, and you had mentioned the cleaning products, I noticed that some of the teacher desks looked a little worn and they didn't necessarily have a lacquer on it. Will any of the products that we're using, is that going to wear down the desks?
So the, the products that I've mentioned, outside of the alcohol base, we've been using those in our, in our schools already. Because they, they were already on our list of what was an EPA approved, so we lucked out with that. So I would have to tell you, and, you know, from experience with those two products, no. Now, the one, that's a great question. The one that's the Cleese, that's an alcohol-based, it, it may wear down the surface. Unfortunately, I don't, we, I don't really have any experience or history with it so far to be able to answer your question accurately on that one.
Okay. And the last thing is the backpacks. How many of the schools have those backpacks available?
That's a great question. I can follow up with you on the exact numbers, but I can tell you from my memory that we did it based on the size of the school. So some of the bigger schools, they got three or four backpacks. The middle schools got three, and then the smaller schools got two backpacks.
Okay, so at minimum, every school has at least one?
At least one or two, at least two, yes.
Thank you.
Oh, you're very welcome.
Trustee Barry.
Yes, thank you, a great report. A lot of resources went into this and I'm sure your team is excited and getting ready when we decide to open up our buildings. My question, actually a couple of questions, go to Dr. Maliko. I guess, who, human nature sets, sent after a while. So this is a great plan, you get a start, everything's great, but after a while, things can get a little relaxed. Who would be responsible in each individual building? And this is, I mean, a tricky question, but I'm setting it up for my follow-up question. Who would be responsible?
That would be the principal and the engineer working together. And then central office can provide support as necessary. But, but generally, the building engineer, and that's the one great thing that Dearborn has that most districts do not have. We have an outstanding engineer program with a supervisor in that area to take care of these very issues, which makes it a lot easier for Dearborn schools because of that program that we have in our, with the great staff that we have with that program. So we, we are ahead of the game because of that. And again, they work closely with the principal.
And, and I do agree with you there, I mean, full-heartedly, that we have some amazing engineers in this building, we're very thankful to them. Okay, but if, if I'm an employee, teacher, cafeteria worker, what have you, and I see that really things aren't happening like they're supposed to be, who do I contact? Are we going to set up like a system where you can call in to report? Because let's be honest with each other, if I'm a teacher in a building or an employee in a building, I'm probably going to feel intimidated going to that building administrator. That's a lot of pressure on the building administrator and the teacher. Are we thinking about setting up some sort of system, some reporting system? If things do get, I'm not saying that they're gonna, but we understand, with understanding, human nature sets, and there might be a building or two. We want to make sure our staff is confident that we're doing everything we can. But if we start going backwards, what are your thoughts, Dr. Maliko?
We can discuss that. We have not discussed that idea, but it's something that I can talk about with the administration. For right now, I would say there's two ways. Again, it's through the building engineer and the principal. But if they're not comfortable, the other way that they can always use, which has worked in our district, not only for COVID, but for many situations, is through their building rep or their union official. And then, you know, their names are not really given. And, and actually, we've had reports that way. And in fact, we've intervened directly because of the union heads, both in the DFSC, DFT and others. And that system seems to be working right now. But, but we can definitely explore what you were recommending.
Yeah, thank you. And you know, Dr. Maliko, sometimes I ask questions just to bring out the information. So.
Sure, sure.
So a lot of our employees are paying attention to this meeting. And I want them to understand that part. I want them to feel comfortable that when they go in the building, that they feel safe. Thank you, sir.
Other questions? Trustee.
Oh, yeah, Mark, I'm happy to hear we're going to be approving some new hires. But that then begs a question, and I don't know how many of our employees may or may not have had COVID and be potentially immune at least for a while, and how many may get vaccinated or not. But we also know that we struggle with subs in the teaching scenario. I'm going to assume we're going to struggle with subs were we to have a quarantine and/or COVID issue at any given building. And the custodians and engineers are key to opening in-person learning. So are, do we have enough backup? Were there to be a situation in one or two buildings throughout the district at any given time?
Yeah, great question. Mr. Shelby and myself had a meeting with Mr. Wall yesterday, just about the same topic. We're going to continue hiring in some subs. We already have some people that have interviewed that Mr. Shelby is ready to bring in as subs just for backup, like you mentioned. We're also going to utilize, we, you know, budget consciously, we're going to be careful. We're not going to always go to that first, but we did talk to Mr. Wall. We, we have a budget that'll utilize some overtime with our current. We have a budget that'll utilize some overtime with our current custodial staff to cover some of those gaps that you mentioned. And we also have another plan and that I just can't, to be, to be completely transparent. It's in discussions. I can't really unveil it right now, but at the, at the right time, we'll make it available to the board and to the public. It's just, there's a plan that's in discussions right now to also give some help on, on the same topic that you mentioned.
Okay, thank you.
Trustee McDonald. Trustee McDonald.
We can't hear you.
We can't hear you right now.
Hello?
Now.
Is that better? Yes. Sorry about that. I understand that the, that we go above and beyond and that the frequency of using cleaning supplies on touch surfaces has been brought down to a minimum of twice a day. And I understand that we do go above and beyond, but I'm a little concerned about dropping that at all, considering that we have a more highly infectious mutation of the virus out there. Can you speak to that?
Dropping it? Well, we, we are not going to take the state's recommendation of dropping it down to a minimum of, of two, twice a day. We're going to continue with what our original plan was of having staff going throughout the building all, all throughout during the instructional day. And we're going to try to do it as many times as we can get somebody around the building and into the classrooms according to the schedules that, you know, the administrators give to us. So we're, we're going to keep continuing throughout the entire instructional day of sanitize or disinfecting the building as much as possible.
Okay, thank you.
If I could just add to that too, that we're going to continue with the higher standard and we've been talking about that going back to last year. And I, I, that has been my message in all of my administrative meetings is we, safety is so important that we want kids back in, but we have to balance that. And so we will not do the bare minimum. We will continue to go above and beyond. And that's the other reason I appreciate Mark and his team's great work with Gary. You know, we're a large district, but I'll tell you, our principals are working great with our engineers. And we're going to make sure that these buildings are clean and that's why we're also stockpiling PPE. Because we're going to use it, whether we use it this year or next year, we're going to go above and beyond on those areas. And we appreciate the support with the board as we do go above and beyond. And there's additional cost to it, but it's necessary to potentially reopen the school. So thank you.
There's no other comments. I think we can get back to the presentation.
I think we got Mr. Leacher coming in for this one. And I'll share the screen again. One of the things I'll just mention as he comes in is that I directed staff way back in the beginning of September, when we decided to go online to actually do walkthroughs through buildings. And what, what that meant was Mr. Leacher would be with an executive director and they would be looking at, you know, specifics within the building. I will say this, central office provides the guidelines, the overarching requirements. We're following the state regulations, but because of a district our size, and we've talked to all the principals and Mr. Higgins is presenting later, each building then has the specific plan because, you know, I was principal at the VALL and I was principal at Salina. Well, those buildings are much different. So your plans are going to be much different just because of the, the makeup of the building. And then we have newer buildings. And so, you know, anyone that wants to know the specific plan would have to go to that specific building principal. And we do have that shared leadership in a district our size and we trust in our principals working with our engineers. But having said that, central office has been guiding along the way and providing the overall requirements and the parameters to ensure those safety provisions are put in place. And I'll turn that over to Mr. Leacher and he's been doing a great job. We appreciate having him as the safety and security specialist.
Thank you, Dr. Malaco. That's a great lead and, and good afternoon, President Thorpe and board members. Thanks for having, having us today. So basically to go over the social distancing component, as Dr. Malaco said, with each building being different, the things that were, were emphasized with that as the subcommittee went through the buildings was to make sure that, that we were encouraging social distancing from the time students got to school and throughout their day. So in, in line with that, we encourage and encourage administration to work out plans where they are utilizing multiple entrances into their schools. And in most buildings, if not all, that has been done. I know the tours that, that I was on last week with, with trustee Watts. We, one of, that was one of the first questions that was asked and, and every engineer and principal, again, working together as they, they do and they do that well, had that plan in place for multiple entrances. You can see from the pictures on the slide, some of the other things that have been incorporated are directional markers in the hallways, in hallways that are, that are two-way traffic. There is typically a tape, a tape, a piece of tape down the hallway that indicates one side of the traffic is for one way and, sorry, one side of the hallway is for one, one-way traffic. The other side of the hallway is for other way traffic and that is on hard surfaces. Where there's carpeted areas, you'll see in some buildings where they've set up stanchions and poles to keep kids, again, keep that one-way traffic flowing. Their staff is encouraged to make sure that that six-foot social distancing is occurring during that passing time or when, when, when there's movement in the hallways. Again, because of the different layouts of the buildings and the administrators knowing the traffic flows, we've also encouraged where possible, one-way hallways. And in several buildings, that's been, been able to be accommodated as well. So for the, as far as the classrooms go, we have gone with, the subcommittee went into the classrooms and looked at layouts in just about every size classroom that we've got within the district and found that on the, on the low side, I believe, maintaining six, the six-foot distance, we're able to put on the low side, six to eight students in a classroom and then no more than about fifteen in, in the larger classrooms. So throughout the day, again, in passing, that is encouraged for the social distancing with the, with the trap, with, again, with that being monitored by staff as well as bathroom breaks, which is done with, again, the plan between the administrator and the, and the engineer working together. And I believe that there is some work being done to encourage the bathrooms not being used during, during passing times when, when there could be large congregations of students in the, in the restrooms. So they'll be, they'll be, they're tightening up on that as well. And I know in several buildings, they've eliminated locker use again to, to encourage that distancing to, to be followed throughout the day.
Sorry, I was having a little trouble with my menu there, my mute button. But I think we could take, if there's any questions on this before we go into the plan, if there's anything for Mr. Leacher. And then we'll go and we'll be bringing in the principals soon.
Trustee Watts.
So it was mentioned that obviously, you know, with our tour, I, you know, every building is very unique and special in its own right. And so every building is going to have a specific plan. Who's in charge of coming up with that specific plan?
That is the building principal, again, working with the engineer and their staff to make sure teachers are informed. And I did talk to principals, the union, and we're going to remind and make sure that staff are well informed because they've been comfortable online, but when they're having staff meetings, we're going to be reminding principals to go over those plans with the, the entire staff. So it is again, the building principal with this, but they have to follow all of our regulations and parameters that the district's implementing, along with what the state is requiring.
And then once they come up and their plan is completed, what do they do with that plan? Does it stay at their building level? Do they turn it into central office?
Yeah, it's at their building level. So it'd be available at their building level. But they're generally taking our plan that we had to submit to the state and they would need to use that. But as far as, you know, Salina saying, you know, we're going in through different doors or whatever. And John, you can maybe speak to that, that they would just be keeping that at the building level. I don't believe that we're doing any kind of collection of that. We're just making sure that they are following what we've required at central office and by the state.
Right. So then to follow up, I noticed that, you know, when we're reading the blue cards, one of the comments was from Lori Parent. And I think she was probably trying to find some answers that these plans may be able to, to fill in. So what sort of direction would she, I guess, where would you direct her to? Like to the school principal?
Well, I guess it depends. She, I would first say go to our website and look at the return to school plan. And I would say that you would want to read that first because that has all the detail on cleaning and all the things we've talked about, which it has the entire district plan. That would be the first place to go. And then that way you have an understanding of what the large plan is, including lunch and other things, because there's so many components to it. There's a ton of components. So really you want to familiarize yourself with that prior to going. And then I would say, if you want to look at, you know, specific to a classroom that your child may be in, yes, contact the building principal and they can talk about what they're going to be doing at the local level.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
That was gone.
And Dr. Malaco alluded to it. I asked this question way back when we were talking, having this conversation. And Mr. Leacher said that they hadn't considered it, but probably would. So entrances and exits at school start time and, and let out time. We know that in the past, we went under a security change where all the doors were locked when we were having issues at that time for a different reason. And only students were allowed in and out and parents and visitors through one entryway. But that, that is going to be a logjam of students if we don't do something differently. So what plan has been resolved and how do we still maintain a safe school exit and entrance way with also being socially distant?
Well, I can, we would be using multiple entrances in each building principal. And we talked about this with the principals at my meetings along with the union, with the ADSA. But they're all developing that. For example, Mr. Higgins is coming in later to talk about the elementary. He can, you know, comment on what he's doing possibly as an example at William Ford. But each building will be different based on the entrances being different. Obviously, at the elementary level, there'll be supervision. And then we would have supervision at the high school and that we have security and other things that we would use to supervise the entrances and exits. But we would definitely want to use more entrances to allow for less, like you said, congestion, given the COVID. And each principal will be, you know, working with that to allow those parameters. Elementary is very easy to supervise because it's a balance of the safety, but the teachers will be there. The teachers are there anyway when they enter and so that will be just determined by each building. John, would you, is there anything to expand on that or?
No, no, you covered it very well, Dr. Malaco. Thank you. Yeah, is, each building is doing exactly that. They're evaluating the best places to have multiple entrances, multiple exits at the beginning, at the end, the end of the day is an example. I know Salina Elementary has a great setup where there's exterior entrances into, into some classrooms and into hallways. And so they're actually lining students up literally in their classroom assignments to go right into their classrooms from the parking lot, from the bus there. But that's not able to be done at every building, which is why we're encouraging the, why the building principals, working with the engineers, have been encouraged to develop those plans on their own.
Are they then going to also, and I can especially see this when we get to the middle school, high school level, outdoor socialization, entering and exiting. These kids are going to not experience the school day of old when they're inside the buildings. They're going to be separated as much as possible and have a lot of eyes on them to kind of maintain that. How about when they're, you know, you might say you got six doors open for the high schools, but everybody's congregating at two because that's their time to socialize before they walk into the building. How are we going to, is there a plan to monitor it or are we going to hope for the best? Is that, that going to be the case?
We're going to monitor, we're going to monitor it, trustee Petlicoff. But I will tell you, another advantage that we have is, and this is where we're going to have our principals, but I'm already talking. We're going to ask our students to help us. We're going to ask our student leaders. And I'm in the superintendent's student advisory council. As the board's aware, it's my sixth year. And one of the things I clearly hear from the, the students, they're high school students, but I'm getting, all the emails I get from students are mainly, we want back in school. Now, they understand that we can't have everyone at the same time. They're totally understanding. They want to be back. One of the things they've said to me is that they're going to help to kind of police it as well. Obviously, we can enforce it with our staff, but we have limited staff with a large number. Now, it's less coming in at a time if we're doing two groups, let's say, or three groups, which we're going to recommend two. But they've understood and we're going to ask the student leadership groups to help get word out. They want to be in school. Well, they know, and I put, posed that with them, is that we need their buy-in and we need their help. Because if they're not following the rules, what's going to happen? There's a potential for getting the, the spread of the COVID. And then what's going to happen is we're going to have to make decisions on whether we maintain opening or not. So we're going to use the student body as our aid to try to get not only compliance, but to be, you know, team players to make sure that we get them back. You've, and again, all, most of the comments and emails that I receive from students are they want back in school, they, they miss being there. I would just say it's really actually a positive and I really enjoy it because, as you know, before the pandemic, I used to get emails in the snow days, close school, close school. Well, now I don't get that anymore. Everyone wants back, which tells you that they understand, you know, the value of education. And I, and I'm proud of them for taking that stance. So we're going to use our staff, but the reality is, is that we have the staff that we have and we'll try to enforce it. But we need the students to partner with us so we can get them back in school.
Okay, thank you.
Trustee Watts, you've got another question before we continue on?
No, not a question. I just wanted, my observation from going through the school. I wanted just to thank Dr. Malaco for helping set up those tours and to, to John Leacher and to all the admins and principals and support staff. You know, the common theme was they missed the kids. And there were some high emotions about it. So it was very eerie going through the buildings empty. I'm used to having a lot of noise. So it was, it was a good, you know, indicator that I think, you know, everyone is trying to do their part and everyone, you know, is supporting what the board decides. But it was, you know, it was very odd to not see the kids and, and they're truly, they are missed by all of those who I spoke with, so.